We're gonna do a mock roll call, I think.
Here, go for it.
Well, lost my picture, hold on. Mayor James is not here yet there, I see, no.
She's, she's here, she went off camera for a second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Salvino?
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Here.
Commissioner Oddman?
Yes.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
And I'm informed City Attorney Ansbro is running about five minutes late due to traffic. But I think well.
Waiting for him?
Pardon me?
Are we waiting for him?
That's. Eve is waving, so yes, we could.
I am here. That's what Eve is saying.
Okay, there's Eve, I see, okay.
There's the mayor, now she's here for real. Mayor James, I don't know if you heard before Tom Ansbro is running five minutes late.
I heard that, I didn't hear what we were deciding to do.
Eve was, is here, so it's okay, we can start whenever.
Hi Eve. Okay.
Yeah, she could step in.
All right, well, I guess we'll get started. I would like to welcome you all to the City Commission, Earthroworkshop, City Hall, West Wing. Today is February twenty-third, two thousand and one, and it is five o'clock, call the roll, please.
Mayor James?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Here.
Commissioner Oddman?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Bootsis. I see her. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first things on the agenda, I'll turn over to City Manager regarding the West Wing and conversations.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Um, so a little bit of history, so then we could get started, because the architect is here that will be making the presentation. Our assessment of all city facilities, including the West Wing, led to findings. Findings included mold. Mold remediation and cleanup took place. We were in communication with Commission throughout this process. The West Wing has revealed twenty-five hundred square feet of usable space that, that is needed. And our next step, based on the directive that we received from you all, was to initiate an assessment and take the next step in ADA compliance and also discuss the possible usage. So to discuss the ADA compliance component is Architect Merrill Romanek, and she's here to make a brief presentation on our West Wing and ADA.
Right, thank you, City Manager Garcia. Really appreciate everybody allowing us to be a part of the process of analyzing that space. We also, above and beyond ADA compliance, we looked at some life safety concerns as well, to make sure that when we use the space, that we use it properly and that it's code compliant to the best of its ability as it's, as a, as a piece. What we discovered in the process of kind of over here to the right is kind of the building code violations, and those can be both life safety and or ADA compliance things. So we basically, first and foremost, is that existing stair, and just orient you today, the Commission chambers is here to the bottom left of the sheet. This is the existing atrium space. This is the stair that's kind of in front of the building department entranceway. That existing stair today, it's what we call the riser and tread ratios are not meeting today's code. But there is an ADA exception that allows that to remain, because it's not feasible to change the slope and the pitch. So although technically they don't meet code, we can kind of let that one slide, for lack of a better word, just because it's an existing facility. The existing handrail today does not meet code, so the handrail would need to be replaced. It doesn't have the right gripping, the right offsets, the right information as far as tack, grabability, if you will, along the, the treads. Similar scenario is on stair number two, and stair number two, you don't really see. Today stair number two is kind of, once you're in the space, you come down the stair and you spill out to what used to be the police department, but now it's kind of more of the development and building folks in that area, and it lands down on the vestibule. Its tread is on risers are a little bit off as well, but we can, we communicated with the building official about that with Jack. And, you know, there's allowances in the code, well, that would allow that not to be modified, but for sure, all the handrails and the gripping and the extensions at the tops and the bottoms would need to be readdressed.
I have, I have a question, Merrill.
Yes.
That's stairwell number two. What does it say where your mouse is?
Says refer to the first floor or plan for continue.
Because, because that's no longer an open access.
Right, so our first step was to look at it as, as, as a viable option for egress requirements to see if we could open it back up and allow it to become that second stairs for sure with the amount of occupants that are going to be there, because it code says more than five, you need two means of egress. We're gonna need a second means of egress, we cannot lie on this stair number one.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, we, we, we're aware of that, but we've just starting to kind of analyze the pieces of the puzzle. The other interesting part is that right now, the City Hall today, because right now, both of those stairs, if we said it was a viable option, which it is not, and I'll explain why, would spill directly back into the atrium, so both staircases would spill into the same spot, which is not ideal from a means of egress standpoint. So if we have a fire, you want to be able to do this, right? This one's blocked, I'm gonna go to that one instead, you don't want to come to the same point where there could be something going on, right? So it's not an ideal scenario for that reason, because they kind of meet in the same position, but it's also not an ideal situation at the moment, because this wall that separates the atrium from the D Wing, if you're, the West Wing, if you will, it needs to have a fire separation, because we do not have fire protection today. This atrium space can be classified as assembly space, and we need to create a separation between the two. So at that point, we realized that stair number two is really not a viable means of egress for us. And so we're gonna need to really take a look at it, and we can capture it back as storage space if we want to, but we think that we need to revisit that. The other thing with the upstairs, as far as code compliance issues, is the bathroom. Today, there used to be two bathrooms, but there is only one today. Codes were going to require that we have both a male and a female restroom. So that is something that's going to need to be addressed. And then obviously, meeting the required means of egress, like I discussed, and then the fire separation requirement between the atrium space and the office space. How we're proposing to do that, and this is the way it's laid out today. And that's how we had to analyze it initially. When we, when I go to my next page, give me one moment. Let me zoom in a smidge, so we can see it a little better. What we realize is that we really do need to abandon that shaft, although that shaft of the stair number two, and introduce a new stair that sets us out into a more remote condition and allows for you to egress out of the space, so we would have to build a new stair on the south side of the existing building that leads down to get you safely out of there as our second means of egress. We could, like I mentioned, we could capture this chase, if you will, which is the vertical shaft back and build a floor if you wanted to, but we technically would need to fire protect it so that smoke and fire couldn't transfer from the first floor to the second floor, or vice versa, from the second to the first. The other thing is, obviously, we would need to revisit the staircase and do the handrails to solve that. And the one thing that I didn't mention is, obviously, today, there is no access to the elevator, right? The elevator stops right here, there's a railing, so ADA compliance, you know, has two, two, two ways, right, which is the stairs, which need to meet that criteria for ADA, but it would also want vertical accessibility via an elevator. So the idea would be that we would open up that railing, create a bridge, if you would, for lack of a better word, create an opening with a rated door, because again, we need to make this a rated assembly that separates the atrium from the office spaces. Then you'd have a door at the top of the landing, we would rework, because there's a lot of little doors and things going on there today, and create basically an entrance vestibule that would give you access to the space. So then, then we'd be able to solve, the stair would get cleaned up, we would have the vertical accessibility to get you into the space. We'd also have the stair to the rear to allow for accessibility, both whether it's an elevator and or a stair. The bathrooms, we're also going to be required a single, to a male and a female bathroom, but also a janitor's closet, we could convert this, because there's plumbing there today, we could actually convert that to a janitor's closet so that you actually keep the plumbing core kind of where it is today, and kind of expand it a little bit just to make sure that we meet the bathroom requirements. Then travel distance, we checked all of those, and we will be fine with this new revised layout, but it means taking out this one interior wall. Now, what we were task assigned with on this project was to really look at what it would take to bring this up to be a viable space to use, not necessarily, you know, the layout completely for its ultimate use, right? Because we don't know who would go there, what would go there, you know, the cost of upgrading the finishes and those kind of things. So when I took a look at the costs, it really is about getting the shell, for lack of a better word, to function properly and the, the key components that we would need to address in the building properly. Wanted to share another slide, which shows, so this is actually the first floor, okay? So this is the atrium. The other twist to this is that stair number one, right, this is where that open stair is in the atrium, would need to get fully enclosed. We cannot spill into that atrium because of its, you can't take them from one condition to a more hazardous condition, so we would need to create a vestibule at the bottom and route them out to the exterior to egress the building safely. We can't bring them into the atrium, which is considered a higher hazard because of the assembly use. Similarly, this would be the stair coming from the second floor down. We would land to an existing sidewalk and door that is there, that would give us our second means of egress. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that some of the scope of work isn't just upstairs, that it kind of feeds its way downstairs, so that we can make sure that we can get people out safely.
Merrill, I only see the, um, the same A1 slide, what slide are we on?
Did it not, uh-oh, uh-oh.
So I haven't seen the different slides that you're talking about.
Sometimes it does wacky things. So let's go, I'm gonna go back to two then, Mayor, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
So this is A2. And A2 is showing you now the elevator connection with the bridge, the door at the top of stair number one, that will, you know, I'm coming up the elevator, I'm going to come to the space, this would be your entry door. And there's a little bit of a vestibule, you could do some signage. Honestly, we don't have to have this wall in the future if you don't want to, it just happens to be there. So like I said, how the inner workings of the interior layout, except for the bathrooms and the stairs, isn't necessarily addressed with this exercise right now, because we don't know who's coming in and what their needs are. But then we'd abandon the stair in the middle, we could have the option of adding a door and making it a storage room if we wanted to, adding a floor. We've got a male and a female restroom. And then we've got the second means of egress here at the very, the opposite corner, which again, when it comes to egress, they, you know, really push you and urge you to go as remote from one another as possible.
Okay. Well, now it makes sense.
Sorry about that, and then let me, now, in that vein, let me show you A3, which is showing you the first floor, just so that you can see it. I thought it was going to automatically pick up when I did slide transitions, and it didn't. So this is A3, this is on the first level. Okay, so this is that stair number one, here at the right, at the right side. Like I mentioned, we need to create an actual enclosure, so that you will end up seeing a wall and a door that becomes part of the egress system for the atrium, and this stair leads to it, and everybody heads out straight to the exterior. Okay, and then this is the stair that comes from the second level down. You egress down the staircase, and we land at a sidewalk on the outside, on the south side of the building.
I have a question, if you don't mind, on this.
Go ahead.
I'm worried where your arrow is, when you're talking about the egress on the stairs, you're going to the exterior. That's going through, is that going through the community development department there?
No, this is actually an existing corridor that leads to this, to the exterior. It's open today, though, so you, yeah, yeah, you'll see. You, yeah, you, yeah, you'll see.
But then I also, because we're going to be allowing people to exit only, I'm assuming there, if we already have one point of access on the other side. So I'm not sure how secure that would be to allow people to exit, and you have no knowledge of who is entering. Um, we went through this with BSO to make the facility a, a one entry facility, to decrease all of those things, but if it's exiting only, how are we ensuring that they're only going to exit and not possibly help door enter?
Right, well, the, the, Mara, the, you know, the unique challenges, like schools and other facilities, you know, and from a safety standpoint, you know, because the world is very unusual, right, that we encourage one point of entry. Why? So you can check ID, you can check temperature at this point, you know, right, so you can enter. But that doesn't mean that even today, that atrium's required more than one exit. Um, this door, which unfortunately, we're not showing the whole atrium in the drawing, and I can't pull it up very quickly. But, you know, you've got other means of egress that exist beyond the main door where people come in to check in, right? And that's code required. So this would be no different from that. Um, you know, you can exit through it, you know, and you can badge access, so that people cannot come back into the space. Um, and, or lock it, and it's only got a push bar on it, and you leave. And then the door has a closer, and it closes behind you, but you're going to be required more than one exit already.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So that, any other questions about the layout and what needs to be done to the space to make it functional and usable?
Can you go over a little bit through the mayor about the, the, the cost?
Yep.
And, and the timeframe as well?
Yeah, that was my next step. So, can, can, does everybody see this slide with the cost estimate?
No.
Okay, darn it. I have to undo and then go back into, so, there we go, better?
The one with the cost breakdown is on there.
Yep, that's what we, so what we've done is put together preliminary cost estimate. Again, this is not necessarily to make it ready for um, somebody to move in and set their desk up. This is to make it ready to decide who would want to take that space, and there may be upgrades you want to do as far as finishes, lighting, you know, that kind of stuff, but this at least makes it functional to be able to be used. Um, we included an allowance for demolition of about $10,000, because we're going to have to punch open some openings in the, both the atrium wall to allow for the bridge. We're going to have to punch an opening on the south wall to allow for um, that second stair, we're going to have to demolish some walls to allow for the bathrooms, we're going to have to clean up a few things to make sure that it functions and works properly. Um, we're going to have to build the new bridge, so we allowed $20,000 for that. Um, we have a new entry door at the second floor, that's upstairs and downstairs, we've got two new doors. Um, and reinforcing those openings, we've got new railings at, at the atrium stair. We've got rating of that, that atrium sep- separation, which doesn't exist today, it's wide open, right? Because that's a stair that you can kind of see the handrails. So we need to create that rated enclosure that separates it. We do the one hour rating enclosure at the existing interior stair to steal that off that vertical shaft that I talked about. We'd have to install some exit signs, we're budgeting about 10 of those needing to go in based on the layout, and that's, isn't just, that's some downstairs as well. So it's upstairs and a few downstairs, so we can route them down the stair and out the back. Um, or the, out to the west, we'll have some new interior rated doors to allow for, those are for the bathrooms. We'll have uh, two new fire rated doors, those are the um, the atrium spaces. We'll have two interior non-rated walls, that's uh, creating the bathroom enclosures. And then the ADA compliant restrooms. That subtotal is about 180,500. And then we added the general conditions of red and profit insurances. Um, that brings it, and bond, that brings it up to about 225, 625. And then we layered in the just in case you find something weird, an oddity, something that, you know, because there is not great information on the existing structure and that kind of stuff, so there may be, we added a contingency, contingency just for the what ifs. So it puts us at about 248, 187, 50, to get the space compliant to be used.
Are we supposed to give our, our thoughts on this? This is a very expensive project. I don't think it was going to be um, that, quite that expensive. I'm not sure if, like, because this doesn't even cover uh, the interior of how it's going to be redesigned. This is, like you said, just a shell. What about the flooring, what about the walls, what about the decorations, what about the furniture?
Yeah.
Uh, I foresee this being very, very expensive. And I'm not sure if part of this could be covered by um, community development with the building fund, or what their allowances are or aren't. But um, yeah, that, that's a pretty hefty project, and I think that we're, we're definitely halfway the pros and cons, and see what opportunities there are, um, because it's quite an investment. I don't know if anyone else had anything to say. Go ahead.
And just to, just to put it in perspective too, just as far as by code, the square footage is, you know, that we look at buildings, and the code has changed actually since we did this. But it's typically use one, 150 square feet per person. So we're gaining without the stairs, probably, we could probably get about 20, 22, 23 people in this space. So if you wanted to look at it, and that may, that means, you know, that you gain that as an amenity that you don't currently have today. So it may weigh into your decision-making process. Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, my turn?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I think, Mara, I think you hit one, one thing on there that I agree with. Um, community development, you know, but uh, they're allowed, I think, to put money into that building. Uh, I believe, because that, they use the impact fees, and so wanted something to do to benefit that um, that, that department. And I know that maybe if they use some of the offices, if they needed it there, the funds could come from there. I know that they can't fly at all, but um, I think that part of that could go in there as well. The other thing is too, is that um, you know, I talked to uh, the, the manager yesterday in regards to this. I just don't know where, other than uh, well, when we get 2,500 square feet of usable space. Um, I know they wanted to move some of the, some of the things around upstairs. I'm just trying to figure out what we're going to do with all that space, to put 250,000 plus.
Um, not sure who, if the city manager wants to respond to that, but I, I would say I took the tour, and it, it wouldn't just be complete open space, you know, you have to have space enough for, we, we have an assistant, or I, I forget what we, we budgeted for, we've never funded it, but someone to assist the commission, they need to have the space, it's five of us. And then we have opportunities for maybe a department to go and be shifted over there. Then you have to have a meeting space or a conference table, have to have room for your, you know, best spaces, including two bathrooms, storages, um, copy machine room, and so it's not that it's just complete, it's not going to be completely open space. Of course, you can fit 20 something people, if you're having like cubicles and things of that nature, but that's, that wasn't what I, what I.
I saw that, I saw the upstairs, it looked nice with the offices that were done by uh, uh, Mr. Geller when he was there, and I saw that, I took the tour yesterday. Yeah, I was, I'm okay with, you know, whatever the, the majority wants to do. I, I explained it yesterday to the city manager, I'm not uh, I'm not opposed to anything that you guys want to do. I just, uh, $250,000 plus that, I was hoping maybe we keyed in on the uh, community development. That would have been nice to be able to receive, you know, maybe half the funds from them, that wouldn't be so bad.
I agree with you. I'm sure we're going to um, entertain, entertain that and look at all of our options with Frank. Commissioner Oddman?
I, so I was just going to say, and I, I agree, I think we're all have similar lines of thinking. Although, I, I think we also have to keep it in context of remembering that this initially happened when we were having the conversation about an entirely new city hall. So I wasn't particularly surprised at the price, because it was such a nightmare up there, and I knew that it was going to cost um, a few pennies to get it done right, because of how um, how this is going to work. But uh, when you weigh all of it, you know, against the fact that we're, we're, we're doing this to best utilize what we have. Um, instead of, you know, going with the, the plan for the, the new city hall, I think it's reasonable. And I think that uh, there's, you know, the ways that it can be done to uh, make it even uh, hurt.
Okay, okay, cool. So I know that the reason why we have this here is to give the city manager direction or an approval of, of, of this amount um, uh, from the architect, is that, is that correct? City manager, that's what you need?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And, and if I may, through the mayor, what I wanted to add, and, and I think Commissioner Oddman hit the nail on the head. When we were exploring, you know, you know, 30, 40,000 square feet of, of a new city hall back in the day, we were talking about 10, 12, 14 million. I think to be able to capture 2,500 square feet of usable space, and like you said, Mayor, we wouldn't be looking to house 22 people, but we would be looking to hire, to house the elected officials, plus an assistant, which will be six, and our four HR employees, which will be like a total of 10 people, because right now, we don't have the proper space for all our HR employees. We have, for example, you know, Katia all the way at Public Services that we would need here. Um, also, a Vice Mayor Salvino hit on a point. We have building funds, um, to be able to address some of these expenditures, particularly that HR touches all the different departments. We also have a check uh, for 200,000 that we received from, from Daniel Point that touches upon fire and, and, and safety that we could use associated with, with compliance. Some of this, the challenges that we're facing here um, are associated with, with fire, fire safety, compliance. Uh, so money-wise, we would have the funding. Uh, and I think to be able to seize all that space is something that, that, that we would need. So I think it's a good investment for the return on the investment.
Okay, um, I mean, I would like to move forward with it, and, but I would also like to know exactly how much money is coming from where. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, how you would, how we would facilitate that, because I would want to see how much could the building fund possibly pay. Um, and, and with the fire fees or the check that we receive from Daniel Point, how much of that can go towards it to see, I mean, because I'm sure all of us would say yes, if not a dollar payment of our general fund. So that, that would be an automatic yes, but I, I definitely want to see those.
Absolutely. What we, what I can do, a mayor commission, should you give me that directive, is come back at the March meeting with a financial um, breakdown, so you guys would know exactly where the money would come from. And if you feel comfortable at that time, we could move, move forward with the whole restoration. And then the next step would be, hey, this, you know, the usage, you all can be able to support or approve the usage, and that will be the secondary step.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, anyone else to that?
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, okay, I didn't see your, uh, your hand, or your, yeah.
Um, I, I, okay, I, I, and I just, city manager, I just have a, a question, because that $200,000 that we have from Daniel Point, my, my understanding was that was supposed to be used towards police and fire, and, and especially because we couldn't end up doing the fire station over in Daniel Point. So I would, personally, I would prefer to have that money go towards a future fire station or something to do with that, because I thought that was the intent of it.
You have, you have flexibility. At, at, at the end of the day, um, there's other avenues for that, but if you want to leave that only for that use, but one of the, the things I would discuss here in this presentation is, is some of these. The, the biggest expenditure in this construction is, is the fire safety component. But if you don't want to touch that, that check, um, we can certainly find other ways. Um, building could pay, could, you know, pay a portion.
It's just not every day we get a check that's that, that's, that's why I'm saying that. And I, and I hate to take it away from what we, we're always had one, to do it for, for purpose like this. Now, I do understand that we do, the city hall needs more space, we need more offices, we definitely need more space for everybody. Because there's more and more people being hired, and there's just not enough room for everybody. So I, I have no problem with moving forward on it, I just think we need to look at other options for funding, and I, if the building department has the funding, that's fine. Uh, but didn't we budget money for this anyway? Some money for this?
No, I don't think we budgeted monies, because we didn't know what to budget. So, you know, I, I would rather budget monies, um, when we know exactly, um, the steps that we're going to be able to take. So, um, but it, it, that 2,500 is, is needed for, for space. You guys have been deferring your position for the assistance of the mayor commission, and we have other needs to fill the, the, you know, the, the space that's there, because we need it. But we can come down and give you a breakdown of possible existing funds, and maybe just a minor adjustment from, from a very healthy reserve.
Um, so the, oh.
I, because I do think we need to move forward. I mean, because you don't, it's just wasted space at this point, you might as well do something with it and bring it up to a.
Um, two, two things, two things. Now, the first, the first thing is, the fir- the first thing is, I'm not, I don't mind the money coming from Daniel Point, if it's meant for a fire and uh, safety purposes, because I, we don't know when a new city hall, when a new fire station, when any of that is going to be built. And I, I think that with a lot of different developments, and we'll continue to have the, the money to facilitate that, as long as it's meant for the purpose of fire and safety, I, I don't, I don't mind that. Um, so, and, and the second thing, um, I, I would like to move forward on this, and this is just bringing it back as, as an action for us to be able to vote on, so we don't have to spend this time going back and forth over that, so. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
I'm in agreement with moving forward with it. I think the long-term benefits, 250,000, as long as we maximize where we get the funds from, is going to long outweigh, the benefits are going to long outweigh just use having that space there. But what I would like to know is the timeframe, um, you know, once we do get started on it, because I think everybody's pretty much in agreement, and I didn't, I don't believe, about the timeframe.
Um, just to, it, it, we alluded to that there may be a tandem improvement of the interior of the space. Um, but just if we said, you know, to do the stairs, cut the openings, create the bridge connection, the bathrooms, probably construction-wise, once you've got a contractor on board, is probably a four-month process, just because some of the items are going to have some lead times. Um, and we want to make sure, you know, just the, doing the bathroom, and you know, the inspections and all that stuff, so to, to get it ready, I, if you wanted to build the whole space out and say, you know, so-and-so's office, and we're going to put carpet here, and we're going to do all that, probably a five to six month timeline. It doesn't add much, but you, you know, it probably will help you. Um, if we can package that all together to, you know, plan and strategize properly, just without me knowing who the tenant, you know, was going to be in here, was a little hard for me to predict where that was going to go, so I couldn't work with the city manager on that.
Thank you. So I, I believe, um, I have my marching orders to come back with a presentation for funding at the first meeting of, in, in March?
I have one more question for you, and a yes for me, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you come back with the, those, those monies, um, about what, this is just like, uh, she was saying that this is just to prepare, to prepare it, we'd also get an idea of what it's going to cost. I mean, you're going to go through all that work, and you're going to leave empty walls there that are, with no drywall, and other than the bathrooms, that people, they become compliant, but are they finished? You know, those are some of the things that I'm, um, and I'd like to see if that's not included in this price here, to be finished walls in the bathrooms and so on. Then, you know, because the other walls can be just finished off and left there until you decide where the funds come from, but sit there and do all this work and leave the rest of the place unfinished, is not going to be any, we're wasting money and time, so we need to be prepared for the next step. So along with that funding that you're going to, that mayor asked about, um, you know, I'd like to see maybe the possibility of what it's going to cost for the complete job as well.
And I think that unilaterally, um, we can bring a, a contractor in there. Um, or look at our, our, our general contractor that we have on board with the team, and give some sort of an estimate, so hey, it's going to be the 250, and maybe another 75,000, you know, or 100,000 that we would need, you know, to pull out the carpets and put the drywall paint and, and, and get it into an acceptable space. Paint and, and, and get it into an acceptable space, you know, that we want to be, be proud of, because we, we want to be used, using it. Beyond this administration and beyond this group of elected officials. I think that's the responsible thing to do and we could do that, bring both. Bring this and bring more or less of an estimate that, that we would suggest.
I'm in favor of moving on.
Yeah, I think we have the consensus because it's a workshop, so we can't take a. We can't take a vote on that, I, I think, right, city attorney? You say yes, but I, I know you're muted, but you say yes, so you have the consensus, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ma.
I guess for that, if there are no other questions, the meeting is adjourned, I'll see you all at seven.
Thank you, thank you.